All right, I've got 4:30.
Let's go.
Let's get started. We'll call the meeting order. Roll call.
Mark, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Steen, Mayor Buck.
Here. Uh, look for approval of the agenda. Motion or second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Public comments? Have anybody here? I don't think we do. We'll move to number five, budget work session.
We'll start. Patrick has, Patrick has the Development Foundation request. We'll run through that quick and then, because it, we'll talk about a little bit revenues later.
Okay.
So, somewhere in there you will see that the Development Foundation's budget is 135,000. And that is based on the anticipated balance of the loan at an interest rate of 5.75% since it keeps going up and that's what the number comes out to be. We hope that we will need zero just because we have a couple of deals in the works, but that is based on an assumption that, the most conservative assumption is that we will put in all the infrastructure out at Rovang and those deals won't close by the end of the year, so we will just have basically interest due on the full balance of the loan. But we hope that the two pending deals right now, one is 600,000-ish and the other one is somewhere between 3.1 to 3.4 million. So we're hoping that we won't need the budget at all, but that's what the number comes from.
Okay.
And the total loan balance comes out to, it's based on 2.3 million at 5.75. The, the full number is 2, 2,340,415. Times by 5.75%, times by 365, divided by 365, comes out to be 134,573.86 cents. Round it up to three.
If we get those two deals through, are we out of land or do we still have?
There would be one rail lot and two non-rail lots. Yes, so we hope all that closes when we're sitting good for the Development Foundation. Then we'll have to figure out what's next, but we'll get there when we get there. Yep.
Well, revenues, starting on page two. Property taxes will grow by six and a half percent roughly, 3% CPI and 3.57% growth. And that's certified, so.
That's for sure?
Yeah.
3% is all we can do, right?
Correct, that's the max. A levy can go up based upon state statutes. It's, it's 3% or inflation, whichever is less. Don't look at me, this was, this was a Janklow deal.
Yep.
Mid 90s?
Nineties.
I think. And then we get growth, which the county determines. We, we do not see any growth in existing home values. So if you remember, Colin, you missed out on the board of equalization. But, you know, property values are, went up in town about 18, almost 19%. We don't see any of that. So it's just new, new construction and inflation.
Is the county the only person to see that?
School districts, I believe.
I think only schools.
Yeah.
So cities-
You can opt out, I think, but-
You, you can opt out.
Cities set the levy, so we need to raise 3.4 million next year and then they figure out what that levy is based on the-
The new value.
The values, and then they divide that out to the values to figure out our levy. So usually our levy kind of, either sometimes it goes down and it has, but it kind of really stays in that whatever we're at, 3.4.
Something like that. And then we collect some back taxes. And then we always have the debate on the sales tax. You know, it's, it's our largest revenue source, but it's also the most volatile. You know, last year was a very good year, '21 was a good year. This year appears to be, it's going to be a good year. You know, we'll probably be north of, I'm thinking 4.4, probably. 4.4, 4.5, somewhere in there. But if you look back, 2018, we were only at 3.2. So we've gone up 800,000 in a matter of four years, five years. So that's always the, the one that makes me nervous.
So do you think the online stuff and the delivery stuff is catching up?
No, actually, online has decreased.
It's decreased from last year.
Is that as many people buying online?
Be my guess. More people are out, more people are more active, more people are going, unfortunately, to see falls.
So sales tax revenues are up about 16%.
And the 21163, that's as of what, just last week basically? Or how often a day does that, the, the sales tax?
It's actual, it's actual through June.
Through any June.
And each month is a little bit different, just how much revenue it raises. You know, August, September are usually a little bit bigger since it's back to school. And then you've got Christmas in December, which is usually a little bit bigger, so they vary. So that's the one that, that causes me heartburn. Yeah, we're pretty conservative. Going back 10-plus years when the recession hit, you know, we didn't, we didn't budget our full sales tax, which we didn't receive, but it didn't impact level of service or anything that we were doing because we were well under the projected budget, or, yeah. So that's kind of what we're trying to do with this is, we certainly don't want to overextend ourselves and all of a sudden, you know, mid-year go, eh, we're not going to hit 4.5, we're only going to hit 3.8. Now what do we do?
So in the previous four years, do you still think that most of the sales tax increases type of construction? Or is the cost still there?
It is for '21 and '22.
It is for '21 for sure.
And '22?
And '22.
Is that just because of the price of materials or is that because we have more-
Partly.
Both.
Both.
Yep, as price of materials go up, sales tax goes up.
Fuel, as fuel goes up, sales tax goes up.
But the building houses is slowing down, I think.
Yep. You know, we did what, 87 last year, whereas normally we're in that 40 to 50 range.
Now, we're still getting sales tax off of commercial buildings, multi-family things.
Correct.
Or any, any other building.
Correct.
Except for schools.
Correct.
So you're thinking like the big apartment buildings?
Um, yeah, the 95th development stuff that's going to go out on the west side. Yeah. And that's going to be pretty significant, I would think, anyway.
Those should be significant bumps and that's one of the things you always have to kind of work out when you look at your sales tax numbers. Is that a one-time expenditure? Or is that going to be consistent? So, you know, the 300-plus apartments out on the west end, that may take a couple of years to build out fully, but we don't want to build that in as a permanent part of the sales tax revenue. So our opinion is that we're going to remain fairly conservative on the, on the sales tax side.
It just eats up our cash balance.
Correct.
Under and that'd be one-time expenditure.
Yep. You know, moving down into licenses and permits, cannabis apps, 128,000, assuming that they all renew. They have to pay the $5,000 application fee as well as the $11,048 license fee. So every year. The other big thing that you'll notice is the building permits. We're at 101,000 so far this year, even though we're fewer building permits. But you remember at the beginning of the year, the end of last year, we doubled our fees to make it more in line with the surrounding communities.
Changed the valuations.
Changed the valuation, per square, per, per square foot valuation of the, of the buildings. Other than those items on that first page, I think that's all the highlights. Page three, couple of notes, the section 5311 and the state funds transit bus. Just remember those are what we asked for a couple of months ago in the application to the state. Now, there's no guarantee that we will get that. The other thing to note in the section 5311 funding, you know, the five-year average is almost 90,000. We had 126 in 2020 and 103 in 2021. Those are both affected by ARPA funds. Federal grants cover engineers' wages and the transportation grant. The other one that causes us some heartburn at City Hall is the bank franchise tax.
Is it crap here too?
It is, it's based on Moritzis. So we, we wish it was a little more consistent. You know, '21 was obviously a very good year. This year so far has been a pretty decent year as well. But again, we'll be a little bit conservative on that. Made a few tweaks on the other ones, the liquor revisions, the motor vehicles tax, et cetera. As you go down the line, just some minor tweaks here and there, but nothing too, too crazy. Page four. Note the SRO wages that are reimbursed from the school have increased based upon our new agreement with them.
Have they, you know, at one time there was talk, did we have two officers or there was talk of two officers?
There was-
We had two officers for a period of time. Yeah, and one split his time between the middle school and intermediate school. And they just decided that they didn't need them.
I would think that they're getting large enough that they would need somebody else.
Jamie's had some discussions with the school.
They talked more and asked us now, there is no formal request for a linear time break, but they-
They got the money.
Yeah, we, before we'd asked them if they would consider funding that sec- because I think we were paying for the second officer, like we were, you know. We asked them to fund it 75% like they were doing the other officer and they, they declined our offer, so.
Are they aligned with other schools with similar student body or other?
Most, well, most places don't have full-time in every facility. They will have officers who split. So they, each high school may have one, but then they'll be middle school ones that then will cover a lot of injuries due. So not every building in the school that you will have an SRO, but certainly one this size. For the, for the, we've seen it because bro guys have to help and cover a lot. Because one else just can't, you know, cover all buildings all the time. In some ways you can, in other ways you can't.
So have you presented that to them?
Yeah, we talked, yeah, we talked and thought and said, no, there were, that's true. Their planning for the future, it's not people that go on this. Before this budget, I talked to them, we thought we should see if that was something this year they were looking at. And they, they were not, the last time I talked to them.
I don't think that's-
By the 2023 year.
I don't think that's our responsibility to pull our guys off if they're not. Put their people in there.
It would be nice to see if they can grow out there, but I'd say it's always-
Well, we're certainly not going to deny services to some, like, office.
No, I know, but I think they should, look at their budget, they got over 50 million or something. Fair dollars.
67, I think it is.
We'll be having this conversation.
I know how cheap Paul lives.
Fiscally conservative. His picture's there. You'll note popping candy at the pool, we, we didn't include any funds since we don't have vending machines or staff selling candy and pop at the pool.
I think a lot of them are scared.
Good, I, yeah, I haven't heard any complaints on not having anything there, so. Yeah, yeah.
We go there quite a bit and I think everybody's in the same boat. We're just, families just kind of bringing their own stuff, bring their own stuff, it works fine.
Park fee developers, park fee building permits, those are all once again dependent on acres platted as well as building permits issued.
Do you know what we've got in that question?
Overall. It's in the negative, I do know that, just because we did the surfacing and we have the tall grass playground surfacing.
No, I mean in the fund where we can spend money to buy rock.
Oh, the third penny?
Oh, third penny. Not much.
130. Moving on to page five. We've got transfer-ins in the water bonds, sewer bonds. Those are to cover the debt service on core phase one, core phase two debt. So we transfer from those funds into the general fund to cover debt service. And then we cover two-thirds of the engineer out of, or a third of the engineer out of each of those departments as well. Just an interesting tidbit, as I was going through other communities, they found innovative ways around the, or to raise revenues around the 3% levy limit. I'll use one city in particular. They have their own sewer, water, electric. They transfer in from their sewer, their water, 150,000 a year into their general fund for use of the street right-of-ways. They charge themselves. And they also transfer in between 325 and 350,000 dollars a year from those two funds into their general fund for administrative services. So they generate almost a million dollars going into their general fund from their utilities.
What's their utility for?
Not bad yet. They may or may not be building a water treatment plant, so. Yeah, a million dollars. And then you see the unassigned fund balance, 1.75 for the Big Sioux Storm and then the core and then a little over a million dollars for the golf course retaining wall and the tall grass surfacing project and plague equipment. If you remember, we ordered the equipment, the equipment will be in, but will be installed until next year. It was late, it'll be late, well, October yet, Devin?
I should have given them a call back, but yeah, they thought by the time they got the surfacing in, it'd be pulled.
But that was in the park budget.
Yeah, but it's, it's unassigned fund balance revenue.
Right, but it's not like we're using the fund balance to-
No.
No, it'll be leftover fund balance this year that we'll use for next year.
That's why it's separated there.
So when you see the park, when we go to expenditures, you'll see that line item in there, but we're offsetting it with fund balance.
Same thing with the golf course retaining wall. We figure about half this year, half next year in expenditures. Page six, third cent sales tax. We're generating, or looking at about 240,000 dollars in revenue from third cent sales tax. And that's one of the reasons why we had Patrick up first, is with the Development Foundation request, I think requests out of that fund total about 261,000. So it would be a deficit, but we've got 130,000 in the fund balance. Or in the current fund balance in the third penny sales tax. So worst-case scenario, Granite Development Foundation doesn't sell any property. We can still cover their request with what we've got in anticipated revenue plus fund balance. Uh, street assessment fee under the street maintenance fund, we're not anticipating any changes to that. It's, it'll remain 250 a linear foot. We may take a look at that in 2024 after the completion of the transportation plan. As part of that transportation plan that will get done next year, you know, we'll have a, a street inventory condition and that will help us determine flurry seals, milling overlay projects, and then we can go back and evaluate if we need to increase or dec- I shouldn't say decrease because that ain't going to happen. How much we should increase that street maintenance fee?
Do we get much pushback on that?
Very little.
Very little.
Uh, page seven. We've got the TIF funds. That's a state aid formula that now that we're a first-class city, we get access to state funds that come into our, for street maintenance, street construction. Stormwater utility fee, we're, we're estimating about 450. That's based on the current amounts paid to date.
Where is that? Does that go into the water fund?
No, it's its own, its own fund.
Right, but is it accessible for general fund expenses or just for that?
Just stormwater.
We've just moved all of our stormwater items to this fund. With the exception of the Big Sioux Storm, which we're using general fund reserves to pay for.
And then we've got some debt service taxes coming in on the conference center. We've got, that's funded by both the bid tax as well as TIF. Page eight. We've got to transfer into the core phase two A, about 450,000 dollars. That's retainage typically. Project should get done this year, right? Okay. So we retain money through the first year and then when they get every, all the little odds and ends done, we release that retainage. Core area phase two B, design 300,000 and then Rushmore project phase two, 5.1 million for construction, that'll be bond proceeds. Page nine, getting into the enterprise funds, water. We've got the water treatment plan loan up on top. The ARPA grant is in there as well. And then water, metered sales is our, our water rates, what we sell through meters. As we've talked about, we, we should really take a look at increasing, you know, at least tiers three and four. There's not a lot of users in three and four, so we may have to leak down into tier two as well. Just for an example, again, looking at other communities, there's a neighboring community that has four tiers. Their fourth tier, $30 per thousand gallons.
11.37.
In tier four?
Yeah. Now, I know of at least two consumers that just got their bills that were well into tier four. One, I think, used almost 80,000 gallons, another one used over 100,000 gallons on their lawn. New sod, I'm assuming. Yeah, and I think the-
Still too much.
Still way too much. That's four or five times more than they should put on their lawn if it didn't include a house or a driveway.
Is there a water leak in that newer, that Carrios road area?
Cairo's?
No, they're watering.
Lookelskies?
Yeah, water, all the way down to Redwood.
There's, there's new, there's new sod on there. I saw it the other day and I drove up there and they just shut off the water.
Yeah, they water in it where that's the path of water flows. Yeah.
Yeah, there was a lot of water on that street. Yep, well, Christine and I were talking this morning, we got the, the water usage report and it was under 1.5 on Sat-, or 1.6 on Saturday, Sunday, Monday. I was anticipating it to probably hit the trigger. And then as we were talking about, wow, I mean, why? People got their water bills.
Probably part of it.
Maybe taken many calls?
Not a lot, I think just got a few on Friday, but.
And they weren't, they weren't mad. One just, he'd anticipated a larger water bill in the six to $700 range, but his $1,100 water bill was a little more than he anticipated, but he understands because he was watering. Yeah.
I say jack, I love.
So the, the metered sales, I didn't really up, actually came down a little bit, just kind of seeing where we're at this year. And I would actually, I think we can keep the base at zero and tier one at zero just to help people offset that water surcharge that we got to put on for the treatment plant because that is a $28.20 surcharge per month that's going to go on there anyway. And then we can increase tier two maybe 3% to 5% and then really hit the tier three and four like at 10% to 15%. So kind of hit the topper in a little bit more.
Where, where's tier two at?
12,001.
To 24?
24.
Does 12,000 still double what it typically?
Yep.
So even if you're watering.
Yeah, our tier two allows you normal, reasonable water.
Normal, reasonable watering.
When you go, when you switch tiers, is it for the whole amount?
No.
No.
Just that you could tell?
Yep, just wherever you're using that tier.
Do we have, people using in tier three, a lot of people in tier three too right now, or is it?
There's not a lot, not a lot of gallons.
And that water surcharge you noticed is, is on there on the next line, 1.3 million in, in water surcharges. Start paying off that water treatment plant loan. Uh, electrical, a 3% increase in, in rates there is what we've got budgeted. Sewer, looking at a five, we budgeted a 5% increase in rates.
And electrical, that's just our, like?
Yep, streetlights and then operations and maintenance of the streetlights and then as well as new streetlights in the, whatever project we're doing. So that'd be Rushmore. Another, surcharge again for the loan agreement. And then the east side trunk is anticipated 3.6 million, that's bond.
So how do our balances look in the water fund and the sewer fund? Does it look okay based on these assumptions?
Yeah, right now it's hard to tell in the sewer funds, I'm waiting for ARPA grant money, so I haven't really figured that in there. For the west side sewer main, we're going to get half of that back for ARPA grant and I'm working on that pay, payment right now, but yeah, it's, we're doing pretty good.
We looked at, at the next five years, I think the sewer fund gets a little bit low in two years. 2024, I think, but we're not, I mean, we're not in the red.
But not enough to have to jump rates because we're higher in the sewer.
No, well. Barring any major catastrophe, we'll be able to function. Uh, next page, page 11, we get into the golf course revenues. Talking with Andrew, golf, season, or, season passes, we'll need to make a tweak next year on season passes. Green fees, probably not so much.
Yeah, I'm weary on the daily green fees, we're already at the high end of the post. We can certainly increase season passes, any season and car leases. And then the biggest tweak will probably be golf outings. There's a lot of demand, we already have a lot. It's a big strain on our labor budget because you need a lot more people on events. I think if we increase prices and stay where we're at on that, that would be great. Even if we increase prices in lots of view, that would be even better. Have more dates for golf. We're doing a lot of events right now. I know other course managers I've talked with are planning to shed some events as well. There's a lot of demand for them right now. And I don't see a need to continue to discount their prices for them. So I think we'll be looking at charging rack rate, six days a week for sure, maybe Mondays because if we can do an event every Monday out here, that'd be great, but sort of, that's our slowest day, no matter what. So if we can maybe discount Mondays, but that's kind of my thoughts on that. And they're pretty conservative, yeah, even green fees and car fees. As you know, weather can zap our chances quickly. This year we had a pretty poor spring, but I did re-modulate pretty well, especially July with numbers. Really, really good for the last so far with the course back open.
Golf outings just lumped in under-
There are green fees and car fees, that's all they're charged.
That would be difficult to separate those out for some kind of US idea of. We try to-
I've got the numbers separated out in my software system. I don't know if we want to do it as a line item here, but certainly something I could present that, that I do every year, like I do. Now, percentage of the council that will take it on.
Yeah, because we did it, uh-
He has those numbers.
About twelve percent in green and car fees for outings.
Does the liquor sales go up on the outing?
Yeah, that's the thing to consider, that, uh, lawn sales probably do increase during them.
No.
I know, surprisingly enough, but just looking at the data the last two years, I don't know if it's substantial enough. Because what I found is, and we're down to only a few Saturday outings now. We've gotten, uh, three or four that have left. I thought we actually do better on dates without an event than we do with. There's more, well, overall, overall, yeah. And we, and we use less staff. It kind of keeps everyone's tempers down a little bit, too. Because we don't want to tie the course up every day here. Because that, uh, just sours people and try to go off against others and the rest.
So at the end, we'll look at those probably in October.
Yeah.
We'll look at rates for next year.
And we'll drop on this year just to inform everyone for next year, you know, we're looking at a, at a twelve dollar player increase, so they can make either plans to increase their fees or seek a different venue. But we're not alone in doing it this way.
How many of those outings are they trying to raise money for charity?
Um, I don't know, fifty percent maybe. And I, a lot of them in their information they send me, send me their balance sheets or attached spreadsheets. They're doing well.
They make a lot of money?
Yeah. And so if we increase it by ten, they're just gonna pass the cost on to players that are playing or their sponsors that are buying. I mean, there's some sponsor signs on holes for two hundred fifty to five hundred dollars on some of these. So I think we, I think we need time for us to look at getting a bigger chunk of that, what they're, what they're making.
And what did you say the other day? Golfing is, you've seen a hundred and fifty bucks per entrant?
Yeah, I, I mean, I've seen a hundred and fifty bucks per player play at these events.
Oh, Garrett just paid three hundred.
Right, yeah, there's, it's, it's, I would say the average is around a hundred a player, but it ranges from eighty to, yeah, about three, four hundred bucks a player.
They were raising money, but.
Yeah.
They paid an over a hundred off.
Yep.
What do you think about keeping the policy of, of the young kids playing free?
Um, I've been thinking a lot about it. We've had a talk here with some of the, some of the, I mean, most of them are great. Especially when I see the twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-year-olds out walking with their friends coming out. Obviously, the issues are with the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds. Or game cards, and maybe don't like volume a lot of sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds are, so that's something I've been thinking about. We'll, we'll see if I can come up with something. It might, it might be nice to get those older kids who can get cards to get a little skin in the game if they want to play out there. We're not talking about a huge fee, but maybe something in that. Because, because the biggest thing I love about it is on weekends, dad can take his two kids out, and he doesn't have to pay a hundred and twenty dollars for his eight-year-old and ten-year-old to come on and play out. Because that's a big deterrent to, to coming out and playing, if you've got a shell of a hundred and twenty bucks for your eight-year-old, that's a problem.
Okay, what eighteen-year-old needs to have a cart?
Not a one, but that's all we, that's all we, on the foot side, that, that's all we capitalize on, is we've been over twenty thousand dollars in junior card at least the last three years. And before, but last year we sold a season pass for eighteen hundred, we sold seven. So we didn't even generate fifteen hundred dollars revenue from that eighteen-year-old. So it's kind of, yeah, it's good one way, it's bad another way. So we'll, I'll have something for that October, maybe a couple of different things I'm thinking, or if I really come up with something. But it's been a great program by and large. It's a really good thing for kids to see it out there.
And when groups do come out, uh, all the food, it has to be from, from us or the-
For events?
Yeah, for events.
So you can either do it through Tony's Catering. We have the menus and our own pricing for that. Or you can bring in your own catering. You pay five dollars per person, per plate on us to bring in your own catering. Yep. There's only a couple of groups that have kind of been grandfathered into doing food on their own, uh, chamber, community foundation. You kind of try and help them out in community events and stuff, so.
Uh, and then you'll notice transferring of, uh, one point one two million. That's for the wall, debt, and capital projects. You know, as we've talked the last few years, operation and maintenance-wise, the golf course cash flow has been, anytime we incur debt for equipment leases or purchase equipment or capital project, primarily that's gonna come out of the general fund as a transfer in. So a lot of that, about what, seven fifty, eight hundred thousand is the wall?
Yeah, eight seventy-five, I think. Talk a little more when we get expenditures on what they are, but golf course is covering some of the smaller equipment, but overall.
Uh, getting into the lounge, nothing major. Uh, same thing with community room is down a little bit in liquor sales. Uh, we're looking at more, uh, towards the four-year average on the revenue side for those.
The, the church is also probably gonna be here another two more years.
Sure.
So that's a really good thing for us.
It's okay.
Uh, Sher Foundation, this is their second year. He said they're still two and a half to three years away from building, so they're still looking for land. So maybe, maybe in a long year, we'll see. They've been a great group. They're, they're really, uh, very good.
Like, what do we make on them a month?
Uh-
Fifteen hundred?
It's around two thousand.
Fifteen or two?
Yeah, it's around two thousand a month.
I think it's two.
I noticed that deck needs to be staying.
Yeah, well, so it got painted nineteen.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, it needs it again.
Yeah.
Also, if you look on page thirteen, it, it totals everything up. And if you look under third cent sales tax, that's what I talked about, we're looking at about two hundred sixty-two thousand, um, requested. So our jiggle fund's up, but a lot of that is construction projects, which will be funded by debt.
How close are we getting to our debt?
Uh, waste.
Waste.
We don't necessarily have an issue with the debt limit. We have an issue with paying the debt back.
Paying it.
But it's, it's like buying a house.
It's like my credit card. I have a huge limit on it now.
You know, with the water fund and the sewer fund really look huge, you know, at eighteen point six million for the water fund, but that's treatment plan.
Loans.
Loans, et cetera. Uh, moving on to page fifteen, we'll get into expenditures unless anybody's got any questions on revenues.
Yeah, Peter.
Yep. Uh, as far as wages go, and this is across the board for the budget, uh, you know, we tie those to the CPI U as of June. And as of June, that was nine point one percent. So all of the wages included, the council wages here, mayor wages here reflect that one nine point one percent increase. And every, there's a lot of chatter going on in the public sector among the administrative types as to what the heck everybody's doing. Because everybody's getting the same, same issues. There's been discussion, and it kind of difference, differentiates by state. You know, some people are, are, are doing the nine percent. Some did a five percent mid-year adjustment this year, and then a four or five percent adjustment next year, January one, kind of splitting it up. Some people are just going with a flat five. I don't think I've seen anything under a five in the discussions in here, the emails back and forth yet. You know, I think everybody in the public sector was, was catching up on wages until now. You know, and now everybody's kind of falling behind again, and that's, that's the way it is. I talked with, um, Luke, who is the manager for Palisades and Big Sioux Rec. The state is going through a wage study now for their seasonals anyway. Because they can't find anybody to work. So I told him what we did, you know, we bumped ours up to sixteen based upon what Sioux Falls did. I think he kind of choked a little bit, because I think their seasonals are twelve or thirteen. So.
Our park seasonals are-
Do we know what the school did?
School did ten.
That's what I thought, but-
School did ten. If you remember, a couple of weeks ago in Lincoln County made the news, um, they gave a ten percent increase to all of their employees except the sheriff's department. Which created a little bit of- And then the next week, they, they gave the sheriff's department a ten percent wage increase as well. Although they didn't, I, I think their explanation was a little off, saying that the, you know, it's, it's not gonna cause an increase in taxes because they're using COVID money. Well, COVID money's a one-time shot. So, but that's what we're seeing around here. Um, haven't heard what Sioux Falls is doing yet. That, that follows through throughout all of the, the wages.
Falls usually has multi-year contracts.
Yep.
And I think they're-
They're in the middle.
They're still in there, so it'll look like really good wage increases, because I think they're looking for a five.
Yep. Because they did it, was it two years ago? I think it was two, and they usually do three-year contracts. So the next contract might be a tough one.
Is anybody freezing the steps?
Uh, haven't got that much into the detail yet. You know, there's, there's some things that we could probably take a look at. Like I said, we don't want to fall too far behind in the recruitment process.
I think we might have to stay with the CPI.
It's a, it's an easy one to do.
Done it for ten years.
At least it has some basis.
Right.
You know, historically, uh, we went three percent, three percent, three percent, just because regardless of what inflation was. And it was okay because three percent was usually above inflation. Well, there's no rhyme or reason to that, so you know, tying it to the CPI was very beneficial to the city over the last five, six, seven years, because CPI was relatively low. I'm thinking you're, you're starting to see a little bit of a downturn in the economy. Housing sector is dropping a little bit from what I'm seeing. Fuel prices are down yay. And they're under four bucks at, at Coleman the other day. So that nine point one might shrink a little bit by the end of the year, hopefully.
But do we do it at the end of the year, or what do we?
We do the budget off of September, or off June.
Yeah, and I do the January increase off June. So whatever the June CPI is, that's what's locked in for January first increase.
So we're gonna go down at the end of the year?
Right.
Um, also included in, in that wages is the nine point one percent cola and then step movement, which is usually two percent roughly across the board, two, two and a half at the most, I think. So that carries through for all of the wages. I shouldn't say all of the wages. Next page, page sixteen. We can skip the city administrator budget. Just shouldn't even include that in here. But that's the same wages. Uh, we're looking at health and life insurance, ten percent increase, uh, in rates for the July one renewal. We did not increase any of the boards by that nine point one percent.
Why?
We can. I added, it'd be forty-nine thirty-six, because right now we're paying forty-five bucks per meeting.
We increased them last year, yes. They were forty, went to forty-five.
What do other communities do?
For boards?
Again, they're all over the place. Some, you know, are zeros, strictly voluntary. Some of them are fifty bucks. They're kind of all over.
When I, when I looked at a few communities that looked to me like, uh, were low on the council side compared to other communities. And I don't know about planning and zoning and park boards and those things. I didn't-
I can, I can reach out and ask. So it'd be-
Well, it seems to me that if, you know, if we're raising the rest of them ten percent, it doesn't seem like it makes sense to leave it flat.
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna be huge. Like I said, it'd be forty-nine thirty-six, bump it up to fifty.
Yeah, to me it makes-
It's not a, a huge deal.
It's not gonna bust us, yeah.
Uh, elections on page seventeen. All three wards will be, assuming that every, uh, people file. We'll have all the wards open. Election for mayor, ward two and ward three. Two and ward three. So that'll be ongoing. Legal, uh, bumped it up a little bit based upon the four-year average. A lot of that has to do with the projects that we're doing with all the contracts.
That's still rated?
Yep. Finance, um, no major, um, wages. I'll just say wages on everybody, so we don't have to continue or revisit. Reduction in health insurance based upon current, um, enrollment. You'll see in code software, you're gonna see, uh, increases probably across the board in anybody that's got software. It's just one of those things.
Do we need to do more, um, oh, over the whole city, more training, staff development? And see, I know you guys run really hard, and I don't know if you ever get a chance to go and get any training, or if you need any training.
Yeah, it, I've kind of got an open book as far as if anybody wants to go to training, just ask. I don't think I've ever turned down, unless it's a really silly one that's out of the country, but, um, no, if there's a training that's around, we don't have any issues with, with sending employees. A lot of training public works is typically in Sioux Falls, some in Pier.
We all might go to Pier.
We don't send them. All those off in the, where, down in the air, so.
Yeah.
A lot of plus waters, so it's a way that fall or spring, maybe those in falls, maybe some gone to Aberdeen, Mitchell, or Waterdome.
And the, the PD does a pretty good job of making sure their officers get their continuing ad that they're needed. You know, like Patrick's asked for, uh, the regional planning seminar up in Bismarck. Is that where it's at?
This one's in-
Woo-hoo!
No.
Full time, it's in-
In January?
I'd say when, what time of year? On September. Is that just before?
Well, it has been a lot.
Lisa's not the better winner.
So it, you know, if he ticks me off, it does something bad, I'm gonna put it, and then make him go to Bismarck. He has to go. And then, uh, you know, the annual, the big one is the league. This year it's in Watertown, which means next year. I can't remember, Pier maybe, or Aberdeen.
I love those sounds wonderful.
Maybe Huron.
So glad, oh, yeah.
Could be Huron.
So glad I'm with you.
Um, significant reduction in equipment since, uh, we got that with the new staff member last year. Uh, next page, page eighteen. Insurance, liability insurance remains the same. Audit services tweaked it up a little bit. General government buildings.
Wait a minute, go back to insurance.
Yeah.
I wonder if that's not gonna go up. Yeah, I'm like, well, you've got some buffer in there, but.
Yeah.
Because with all the planes and stuff, you know, talking to-
Probably will.
Could be, but-
But you're doing insurance, that's for what you, should be, you're not right away. There'll be a, a way.
I know, always plan on around a ten percent.
And with the Public Assurance Alliance, we're not subject to necessarily to, to profit margins. Since we're self-insured. And there, I just looked at their audit the other day, and they're healthy. Got, uh, quite a bit in reserves. Uh, repairs to City Hall, general government buildings. We've got a half a million in there. So the question, don't look at me like that.
Is that what we're gonna stock up?
Well, I mean, the question is, uh, what are we gonna do? Like, if we're gonna start looking at a building, what's the timeframe for that? If not, if we're gonna stay here in these buildings, then we certainly have to make, you know, what was it, eight hundred and some- If not, if we're gonna stay here in these buildings, then we certainly have to make, you know, what was it, eight hundred and some thousand dollars in repairs, um, based upon the I, ISG review.
Do we have more report coming from the ISG?
Just kinda the final, final layout with costs, is it, that's it. When he gave me a preliminary, you're talking sixty-eight million.
Yeah. So he's working on and tweaking what he's looking at now is building something new here.
Yeah.
So, they're working on those numbers now. So that's the question, you know, even, even if the council decided tomorrow that you wanted to build a new building, you know, it's probably gonna take three years. Take a year to probably design, and then eighteen plus months to construct. And then if we have to phase it, you know, here, it's gonna take a little bit longer.
What's the debt service on five million?
Probably about five hundred thousand, probably with interest rates, it's gonna be more, probably six hundred thousand.
I don't know, we don't have that, that slush, we gotta do something.
Yeah, so that's, that's the big question, uh, we, we threw a number in there, because if you remember, I think the roofs, if we're gonna do the roof.
No, I didn't look at that.
If we're gonna do, you know, if we're gonna start with anything and stay here in these buildings, start with the roofs. You know, if your roofs are bad, it doesn't make any sense to invest any money below it. So, and I can't remember what that was, that was a pretty good chunk.
What was the total?
Renovating these buildings, eight hundred and sixty?
You're doing the repairs.
Eight hundred and thirty or eight hundred and fifty thousand.
And they're still gonna have?
Yes.
And all that is, is repairs, that's not remodeling the inside, that's not new windows, that's, that is just repairs.
I think it also is becoming a point of pride, I mean, you go to T, and they have a really nice building, I was just in Canton, I mean.
I, I don't, I don't buy into the pride, I buy into utility.
Well, I'll, I'll go along with that too, but I do think that we're looking pretty shabby.
So that's something to keep in the back of your minds as we go through this budget process over the next month and a half or so. What are we gonna do here, and when do we, when do we make the decision on what we're doing? So.
Well, if we had this in there as a line item, that would be almost the debt service.
Pretty close.
We are, I mean, we are negative about four hundred and some thousand right now, so that would. I mean, if, if you're not gonna repair the buildings and you are gonna move forward with something, we could put some money in there for design or moving forward with that, but it certainly would not be this dollar amount, and then we would balance. But we just got, really gotta know where you're going with this building, so we're out of room, the buildings need repairs, if you're gonna keep these buildings and we have to repair them, or are we gonna move forward with new buildings?
And if we move forward with a possible new building, I mean, how much is it gonna cost us to put band-aids on this, so you, so at least it's operational for the next three years?
If you're gonna move forward with a new building.
I think we, I think we could probably limp it along, um, you know, if it's three years or less, we'd certainly need to patch the roofs, they need patching, but I don't necessarily think we need to tuck point.
The brick.
The brick, or the cement brick, or any of that stuff.
But if we tear one down, so to speak, something, those people have to go somewhere.
Yeah, we'll need to figure out, and you know.
Rent something.
If, if we can move everybody over here, or if we have to go rent space somewhere for a short term. Uh, server firewall, we're looking to buy a new server, it's that time of the, that time of the process again. Next page, page nineteen, engineer. No, the only, I shouldn't, other than wages, the largest thing is software, as we're trying to expand our GIS system. Uh, you know, we have to buy licenses and upgrades for the computers and the users. So that's the, the big jump there. And one of these days, our GIS system will be up and fully integrated.
And Larry, what do you think?
I know, I know.
This year?
I said one day.
Yeah.
Someday. Um, moving on to the PD on page twenty. The department's asked for an additional officer, eventually wanting to get up to two additional officers, I'll let the chief explain.
So, you know, an open rule would be to get two additional from what we have now, um, for staffing and coverage, um, there are, much like all the other departments in the city, you know, below the average or like-sized panels. It also, I think we're all in there, below the average. And, uh, you know, so there's, there's a variety of things that go into that, and also, you know, if, if you approve, say you approve one for next year, it's probably a year from now before that person's on their own functional, so, um, it does take a lot of planning and time to get people certified, trained, up and running. And, uh, you know, it's, it wouldn't be more to be there right now, also anticipating with all the growth within the community and developments coming in, um, as, as you know from previous talks, we're just trying to stay ahead of things instead of playing catch-up. He does probably have, probably struggles with that, so.
Talking about a position that's just general patrol, or specialized?
More probably specialized, you might, if we, if we get one versus the two, which doesn't give us the rotation one, but then we could use that person, um, probably in more of a power shift, swing shift, um, does that.
But still, still on patrol.
Still on patrol, yeah, still on patrol, but as a, as more of a power shift in the meantime, uh, the early evenings, weekends, some of the, when we get most of our calls, historically, that four, five a.m. is a, is a busy time, and that's during shift change too, so we look probably in that timeframe, but then spread over the, the weekends as well, um, for short coverage, because obviously there's administrative and detective people on charge of day that can assist on calls and pay calls, but there are certain times in the day, um, that they're not as skilled. So that's part of what we, and then the obvious, when we get, eventually when we can get to that sixteen, then we would have full coverage, um, three guys on, all on patrol, seven days a week, twenty-four today. And also enough.
And then it is the, a year to buy a vehicle, so that's shown there, and then a speed sign on the east side coming in on Aspen, there's been a request, but that's the only one that we don't have a speed sign on.
That was a previous call, so we'll do that, so.
What's the latest with the roundabout there about Aspen area section?
Uh, well, the corridor study was just completed, DOT with the hour, um, so, they have it in the STIP for their budget, but it's gonna be twenty-thirty. So, yeah, if you see how the paint marks out there, that's just us trying to brainstorm out there on what we can do to it, to try to make it last long enough, but we're kinda coming up short on that too. So, we've had quite a few meetings with DOT about that different section the last couple of weeks, to try to figure out what we're gonna do with it, but, yeah, it's a good ten years out.
No, it's only eight.
Well, that's how far their STIP goes.
Yeah.
So you know they're gonna push it back a couple of years.
No, they won't.
Another emergency problem.
No, they won't. Uh, communications at the PD, uh, decent sized bump in equipment, if I remember right, that's for radios.
Yes, all of our radios have to be encrypted as well, so we have, remember, there's a new, all the, everybody across the entire state had to upgrade their radios from the system they put in, um, apparently, we also have to have encryption because everyone, special communications and everything in the area is, we can encrypt all the channels.
So we're sorry about your scanners.
Yeah.
When did they come up with that, that sounds new?
Yeah, well, I don't know, I was, I was, I don't know who they talked to, but I was informed that somebody who previously owned the corridor, but I didn't know any of it, so, because over the last, we knew this was coming, there's a lot of places that haven't even bought the radios yet, but we've anticipated coming, so over the last, I don't know how many years, we've been slowly upgrading all of our radios in our cars and our personnel, but no one was ever informed of encryption, but I was connected by Metro here, about one to one, and informed, only have you got that encryption or your radio's, or like, that's, everything's going all the way through, so I don't know if they.
I was, I was in those meetings for a number of years, and that's for, I've, I'm inventorying.
They may have bought my first sensor, I don't know.
That's fifty-five?
That was, yeah, that was a unique meeting, that was like twenty-five, I haven't been here, I mean, to do every radio was twenty-seven thousand dollars. It hadn't known its time, it was, it, it costs less to do it at the time of order than it is, because that would have set every radio cap, so if we were known at the time we wanted these, we would have purchased them, we'd save like four hundred dollars a radio doing that type of purchase, but it was, uh.
And then auto service, you know, the, the wild car there is gonna be fuel, that'll be across the board on every department, is what's, what's fuel gonna do, it's been coming down lately, um, hopefully that trend will continue. Fire department, um, you know, the agreement with the fire department is their, uh, payments go up the same as the levy, so levy went up.
Plus growth.
Plus growth, so levy went up six point five percent, there are payments to them go up six and a half percent. Um, not anticipating any increase in ambulance costs, uh, got some siren repairs, which is fairly normal.
Has he, he hasn't said anything about that?
Nope, hasn't said anything. Uh, page twenty-two, building inspections, nothing out of the ordinary. Uh, traffic, we've got the transportation plan and the corridor study, and part of that was reflected in the revenues as well, since those are grant-eligible.
Transportation plan, yes.
Yep, transportation plan is.
Corridor study would be for Holly Grace.
Correct.
So that would be a joint project, the city of Sioux Falls and the county.
So that's it for public safety. Highways and streets, uh, the big thing there is professional services designed on the Lancer light, if you remember, we've talked a little bit about the intersection of Lancer Avenue and Holly with the Hague Development. You know, there will need to be a traffic light there, probably sooner rather than later.
Did Park have the part?
Yeah. S, did SEH do that preliminary? And it's, it's good. We would certainly like to wait, I just don't think it's gonna be possible to wait, you know, once Fairway gets built, and once they start building those apartments, it'd be pretty difficult to move traffic down to Heritage, to the traffic lane. So we've got some money in there for design. And.
Well, redesigning the intersection.
Yeah, we anticipate turning lanes, both right and left-hand turning lanes at Lancer as well as the traffic light itself. It'd be nice to wait till the corridor study's done, but that doesn't match up well with the development.
When does Fairway say they're gonna start?
I haven't talked to them lately, have you?
Trying to get a timeline on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I think they would like to build sooner rather than later, but I think they would like to wait for the late as well, so, we saw a concept plan, we haven't seen preliminary plans or anything on it, but I know they're working on it.
Uh, equipment rally, thirty thousand, what were you, I didn't write it down.
No, this is one I talked to you about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Talked about.
I'll tell you, look at it, there's some stuff that I didn't put on here just to, just to.
Nothing unusual in paved streets. Snow removal, um, looking at three, three sanders, racks, and salt bunkers, sand bunkers. Storm drainage, we've got the Big Sioux Storm Construction in there for one point three million. Um, sidewalks, crosswalks. Sidewalks, we've, we bump up to a hundred thousand. And shared use paths, anything on the sidewalks? Just, we got a lot of repairs.
Yeah.
Sidewalks.
So before, we were just kinda picking up a few sidewalks here and there whenever somebody complained, now we've put it in with our curb repair projects, so it's just a concrete project, and we've been able to pick up quite a few more sidewalks that way, but if we're gonna try to keep on with the slurry seal rotation of the sidewalks, then we're gonna have to start pumping that up for a bit.
Uh, transit, we've gone over that, that's the app that we put in, these, these numbers are based on the application, no guarantees that they will be funded. We bumped up animal control a little bit, anticipating a little bit of an increase in animal control, because I don't think they've given us one for quite a while.
And with wages and everything increasing, I'm kinda anticipating last year, the new contract, they adjusted, uh, call or something like.
The, yeah, the late, late night ones.
Yeah, but, but state spray.
Yep. West Nile, we didn't make any changes, we're, we're doing a pretty good program, we spray typically every other week, regardless, we don't do mosquito counts anymore.
Have we seen a lot of mosquitoes?
Not really. I shouldn't say that, I don't, I'm not outside.
Around where it's been raining, it's been decently, but we haven't bought first of all.
We did talk a little bit, um, about a new sprayer at some point in time, because the one we've got is. I don't think we bought one since I've been here. So. Yeah, so at some point in time, we'll probably have to buy a new sprayer. There was talk about a helicopter or a plane, but we said no. Don't laugh, one of the emails that came out for the administrative, administrative group was, hey, are any of your departments asking for a helicopter?
Really?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, senior citizens, that's the payment we've, uh, paid to the VFW for them to use their, their banquet room over there. Nothing too major in the rec center, no major changes, just wages.
Wages, because we bumped up wages.
Swimming pool, wages again.
With the increase in wages that we did this year, um, well, most, well, it's looking like we'll be over the hundred and forty thousand, so. And I don't anticipate going, starting out, you know, we started out sixteen dollars for lifeguards, but we do have, like, we'll do the step increases, I don't anticipate the sixteen dollars to change, but we kinda gear off that, whatever Sioux Falls is doing. So, you know, they'll have their step increases next year, but hopefully not more than that.
Do we have any, um, cover out there for care and staff?
No, perhaps it's the shape, can't be filled with that.
So, when the derail show, maybe, came through, the first one, I think.
The first.
Um, it wrecked the bars, and we've been, talked to the manufacturer, and they're supposed to be working on a stronger support system, but I think that is the second or third time that's happened.
This is the second time.
The second time that it's happened, when we have high winds, that those support structures break, so we just took them off, and it's probably a good thing we did, because we had that second derail show, and then some higher.
They didn't send any, no move, drawing the braces underneath, and their plane didn't tackle that, have the pool loads.
So we're gonna try to get something else?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, it won't be this year, but.
No, yeah.
And then we'd like to replace the lights in the pool, since those are original.
Yeah, you've been talking about that.
Uh, updates, and then chairs, which is kind of an ongoing. Parks department, nothing crazy, at least in, in, on page twenty-eight. And then on page twenty-nine. We've got a couple of things, uh, restroom building at Pioneer Park for seventy thousand, needs to be, we need a new one. We've got a couple of things, uh, restroom building at Pioneer Park for seventy thousand, needs to be, we need a new one, that one's old. And then list one, uh, case front end loader for a hundred thousand. List two, that's equipment, and then list two is, um, capital projects, paving the tall grass parking lot. And we are discussing pervious pavement there. So kind of a, a zero escaping concept plan as well, to show that pervious pavement works. ADA path down between the ball fields at Aspen. And then Aspen parking lot, which would be the parking areas on, on either side of the road. Not necessarily the parking lot itself, because thirty five thousand isn't going to touch that.
Is this given a park board item?
Actually, we're not blessed with that word.
I believe so.
It was Devin's list that he would have given to park board, I wasn't there either, so I don't know what the discussion was.
Yeah, I was there, so I could talk about it.
Uh, forestry and nursery, we've got our twenty five thousand for trimming, our normal tree trimming in the boulevards, fifty thousand for ash trees. You know, with the discovery of Emerald Ashborn Town, I, I, SDSU and Department of Agriculture seem to be very comfortable with what we're doing and the plan that we're on.
So is that to get some contractors in to help or?
Yep.
Because.
That's what we've been doing the last two, three years.
Although you do it.
We don't do four orchards. We've been doing our park trees, but the four orchard trees for the.
So that might be something in the future that we're gonna have to increase depending on the rate of infection. Uh, libraries, Tim, any, anything on libraries? Oh, Dave, that's right. Dave, any, anything on libraries, Dave?
I've got a couple of books at home I'm reading right now.
No repairs on the buildings.
Repairs on the building, I haven't heard of any.
Okay.
You have some issues.
Last time I was in there, I didn't see any leaks.
Uh, economic development, nothing, nothing major. Uh, promoting the city.
The biggest thing is the fifty year celebration, so I randomly put thirty thousand in there. I did talk to a fireworks guy today, and he said that if you do a fireworks display, it's about fifteen hundred dollars a minute. So if you do a fifteen minute display, there's fifteen thousand dollars.
A bit more than that, right? Fifteen hundred, fifteen minutes times fifteen hundred would be. Yeah, you're off.
Sorry. That'd be ten minutes.
So it'd be twenty two, twenty two five for a fifteen minute display.
Twenty two five, I'm sorry. Twenty, I was thinking of ten minutes. Ten minutes would be fifteen thousand. I have, see, I have it written down too, that's terrible. So I don't know if thirty's enough, it just depends on what you're gonna do and how long, if you're gonna do fireworks. Or working on the committee too, to get groups together and see if anybody wants to spearhead it, because I certainly do not. And what they want to do, so if you want to allow them more money, I mean, that's totally up to you guys, if you want to allow them more money. Because if, if you allow them fifty thousand, you'll just tell the committee, you got fifty thousand. Would be my thought process, I guess.
Uh, page thirty one, debt. Sorry, not much to do about debt.
No.
We do include in, in there the operating transfers out for core phase two A and the golf course. Uh, third penny sales tax, that's where we talked about the subsidy for the Brandon Development Foundation. The other ones, um. Were made pretty much the same. The Sioux Metro is based on inflation, if I remember correctly. I, I think.
Three dollars per resume.
Oh, that's right. Um. We have had some internal discussions about Sioux Metro. I think that, um. They, they may have outlived their usefulness for us.
So what is that?
Sioux Metro Growth, that's Jesse Fucker.
Used to be Makita Lakita.
Yeah.
You know, they've, they've really gone to a, a more contractual basis for their services, so that if you want services from them, you have to. Pay an additional fee and then you get assigned a staff person from Sioux Metro. At this point in time, I'm, I'm very comfortable. With twenty twenty-three continuing as is, to see how things go, but, um. The services they provide need to increase in order to justify our expenditure with them.
We're not getting a lot out of them right now.
I didn't say that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, am I?
You guys can.
You can.
Seems to me like municipal league and CCOG is.
Yeah, CCOG and the municipal league, we, we get, you know, for the money that we spend with those two organizations, we get a heck of a lot.
We use them a lot. Like, I've used CCOG a lot this year with all the grants that we've applied for. They, that twelve thousand is well worth it. Municipal League, all the stuff that they do and the lobbying they do for us and all the, um, uh, conferences that they put together for us. They do a lot for us for the five thousand dollars.
So what if Sioux Metro got worse?
I'll get back to you.
I think Chuck was gonna come.
I'm not aware of any.
Chuck Parsons was gonna talk to us. He's, he's thinking the same thing, and he's the chair of.
We also have the benefit of we've just hired a physician to essentially do, I wasn't even called by name, McCann Patrick, we hired him, but. So we hired a physician to do most of what Sioux Metro could do for us anyway.
Yeah, with CCOG, Patrick, and I talked a little bit a while ago, uh, we need to update our comp plan, so, you know, we'll certainly ask CCOG to help us out with the ad correction, which they're, and there's no charge. So that's, you know, updating the comp plan that's included in their dues. So it's a pretty, pretty darn good deal.
So why don't, like, we'll let him be done with the bag.
Right.
I don't think you can pull a plug on them.
If there's, I'd have to go back and look at the con, the revised contract with them, there's, there's notices that we have to give, and I think we're inside those notices, but.
I would want to do that too.
Yeah, just, I get where they're going with their new organization, the way they, they're working, um. There's a, there's the same type of organization in southern Minnesota called SEDA, and they hire developer, development directors, and then farm them out, which is a very successful program. It's something that I don't think we need here, because we're doing pretty good the way it is.
But they got us along all this time until we got Patrick.
Yep. Uh, street maintenance fund.
Oh, I said we weren't gonna get here tonight, but we did.
I know.
There are some things that we gotta work on in the street maintenance fund.
Yep.
Um, but patching paintings, signs, slurry seal, that all kind of same, same. Slurry seal's down a little bit, because the area that we're doing is down a little bit. Curbing gutters, getting expensive, and there's a lot to do. One thing we gotta look, uh, get a final number on is that mill and overlay in the industrial park. Um, and then the McCarty Bridge, which the McCarty Bridge, there's some grant money coming in on the revenue side of that, but, um. So there's some numbers we're finalizing in there, but overall, those are the projects that we're planning for.
So our city limits go out to the soccer fields, like not on the other side of the road?
Correct. And, and we really paved McCarty Road as, as a convenience or gesture to the township.
Yeah, that's where I'm at going. And that house across the other side is not part of our.
Correct. So we'll finalize some of those numbers. Um, storm sewer fund, the big one there is North Oak Ridge. Um, that is the drainage way, if you're familiar with North Oak, North Oak Ridge is a concrete drainage way that kind of runs northwest through that development. Yeah, that, that, uh, needs some, needs some care.
Especially the way they could make that work over there. I mean, I was waiting for my time.
Yeah, they could have put pipe in.
Storm sewer would have worked.
Yeah.
Novel concept.
But an open concrete channel is cheaper.
You could have looked that over.
Oh, that's like the one on, I think there's one on third, between third and fourth too.
Yes.
An open channel.
Yep.
We wouldn't allow that prestate.
No. No, we wouldn't.
But we're growing up, we're growing up.
Well, you know, you, you, you live and you learn. You know, then we've got some debt, um, payments there that we can, not much we can do about those. Core area project, phase two A. Just finish that up. Like I said, that's the retainage. Four, core area phase, uh, two B, design, Rushmore Project Phase Two, construction. And then we get into the water fund. Source and supply, we're looking at well number six, controls. Uh, and then if you notice a large number under buildings, purification, fourteen million. That's kind of what we figure we're gonna spend next year at the water treatment plant. Uh, we got some money in there for modeling the system as we do pri, or subdivisions come online, we'd like to model it to, so we keep up to speed on it. The meter, phase four, the meter project is in there. Hopefully we will finish the tower next year. Um, that's, that's the anticipation. We figure midsummer maybe. And as far as the meters go for phase four, I think we've had, we had to order them already, didn't we?
Yep, I haven't ordered. Finished it today.
Because we were told.
They are six months out or whatever.
Yeah, we were told three weeks ago that if you order it now, they, they get here in November. And then we were told recent, last week, that if you order now, it's gonna be December, January. So in a three week timeframe, meters got delayed a month and a half to two months. Uh, administration, wages again. Again, looking at annual software. And then the R nine hundred transceiver is the.
Have to update our meter reading software next year, um, because our current one is, I think, support was going away from it end of next year, but I want to get on top of that and get that done. So we're updating that next year, so it'll be the new software and the receiver that goes with it to update that software. It's going to a comm based system. It's a lot nicer, some reporting is a lot nicer, so.
Uh, repairs and supplies, nothing major. Transmission distribution, Rushmore Phase Two. That's electric, street light, I'm on street light already. Um.
Uh, the only major, I, back to the water funds, sorry, page thirty seven, um, there's two bonds that are going on, starting next year, and that's gonna be the water tower and the water treatment plant. So that is the biggest change in the water department, is both of those start next year.
I'll be ninety eight, okay, ninety seven when they fill the.
Well, we will invite you to the mortgage burning ceremony.
Twenty fifty-two.
So the water surcharge will help cover that?
Yep.
Yep, for the water treatment plant, yes. The water tower's built in the rates.
Uh, sewer fund. Nothing huge, engineering bonds transferring into the general fund, again, debt service and, and engineering costs. Uh, collection and disposal, design the line to Sioux Falls, we've got that in there, we've got that additional force made that we need to get rolling with. So design work next year, anticipated construction twenty twenty-four. Uh, Sioux Falls Treatment, have not seen anything from them as far as a rate increase, so we should be good. Uh, we need to upgrade the pool lift. At some point in time, it's undersized now, so we need to enlarge it, especially with, um, Oakland's subdivision off to the west coming into that lift station. Because right now, staff has to kind of time, uh, discharges from the water treatment plant, especially when the pool's running, and then it's a dance that they learn how to do. So we need to upsize that a little bit. We've talked about it for a while. And then we've got the east side sanitary sewer, main construction anticipated.
So what's the, um, overall hit on the increase in wages, the increase in FICA?
Personnel increase.
Any idea?
We'll, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it.
For the summer, it was a hundred thousand, so it's gotta be.
Yeah.
So how much did you say we're up, Christine, four hundred thousand?
Yeah, about four hundred thousand in the general fund. Golf course, um, new air conditioner furnace for the lounge downstairs, actually it's for the pros office. Oh, uh, golf course maintenance requested.
It's Kelly.
It's Kelly, that's right. Um, requested an additional full time person in the maintenance department. If you remember, we had a, two full timers in there up until six, six, seven years ago. And we're getting to the point where we're probably gonna need to take a look at another full timer in that, in the maintenance department. There, there may be a small reduction, although it does show in the budget once we run the numbers and the part timers. New heating and air conditioning down at the maintenance shed, and then the grounds master mower, which has been ordered.
So what would that person do in the wind chair handle?
Well, it would be assistant super captain. Um, in the winter, probably regain some mental health. You know, they're gonna work twenty-five, twenty-six hundred hours, January, March through October, November. I mean, same as Kelly and I do. There's always stuff to do in the winter, but a lot of that, we, we probably will be at like my old position, there's entirely with comp time.
And then we, we'd hope that maybe we could get some additional. Maintenance on machines during the winter.
A big thing in that is just like they're done to see, if something happens to Kelly right now, I, I don't know how to apply fertilizer, what you can do now, growth regulator.
Well, don't take your cue from cut and kill.
Well, that's exactly, that's exactly it. If, you know, we're talking about a mistake there, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, just one green complex alone, if you have nineteen, could be upwards of two hundred thousand dollars to replace it if something were to go wrong. That's why you need that specialized staff.
And we've seen grounds increase a lot over the last three, four years, and the more rounds of play on that golf course, the more maintenance that needs to be done on that.
Did you bump the wages up for like your marshals and some of those, I mean, you're getting a lot pretty cheap on some of those.
Yeah, everybody's got a, and actually, so this year I really reduced my marshal, marshal use, even with the increase in pay. I would say at that position, I'll use less hours. All the maintenance and stuff, it's impossible to reduce hours.
But you were getting by very cheap on some of those too.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, that's just, and that's the thing too with, with that is, you know, part time help can only get you so much in return. Having that other full time person can take a little burden off Kelly too, we can focus on this whole that person can spray, or it's not, according to spray, it's Kelly. He has to go out and spray, he can't, he can't supervise what his guys are doing or instruct them to go out and that.
And then the other thing on there is range ball machine, and we gotta come up with a different description.
It's a, if you ever been to, they have a machine where you flip card, put it open, and this would move our entire range ball operation down to the range, so we almost call balls up, wash them, bring them to pro shop. Right now, the, the balls are transferred around the lot, they're moving around the lot. Um, this would just make that more efficient. It would, it would lower the burden on the pro shop too. For now, if we have ten people in line, four, they might be trying to get range balls, they would just go down, swipe their credit card down there, get their range balls. You could pay them, wash them, very big down there. For now, if we have ten people in line, four of them might be trying to get the range balls, they would just go down, swipe their credit card down there, get the range balls, you can pick them, wash them, dirty thing down there.
It's a range ball vending machine.
It's essentially what.
Okay, that, that's what we're gonna call it from now on.
I'm gonna add vending on there.
Dispenser.
No, we don't wanna, we don't wanna confuse people.
No.
Uh, lounge, I can't think of anything too major.
No.
And same thing with community room, nothing too, too major there as well.
So, with the revenue, they're covering O and M, I would say they're, they're covering about thirty thousand dollars plus O and M, so they're covering like the furnace and the range ball vending machine, um, and one other item, so.
If you look on page forty-five, we've got listed out the, the building expenses, so we need to replace the doors in the building, uh, all of those are original doors, so they're twenty-some years old. And then, of course, we've got the retaining wall. And then, as far as patio miscellaneous, once that retaining wall is done, we're gonna have a new patio, get new patio furniture, stuff out there's... Yeah, okay, thank you.
That's what it's been for three years, it's just paying the street down, so it's just getting longer.
And then debt services, primarily equipment leases. Anywhere from the mowers or maintenance equipment out on the course to the golf carts.
We have about two, three years left on the equipment.
Um, one of them drops this, next year.
Well, the big one.
The big one is, yeah, third year next year, three to five.
Yep.
Any plans to just do one or two pieces a year before that turn of debt?
Yep.
So, that's it, we actually made it through, um, if there's any information you want us to take a look at, give us a call, and we'll see if we can figure it out. I got a six o'clock meeting. Okay, so, like I said, if you have any questions or anything specific you want to ask us, don't hesitate to give us a call, or if you want us to take a look at different numbers, like, uh, Barb's with how much is wages and FICA and workers' comp, all that good stuff.
When do we meet again?
I was gonna say, who's gonna be here on the eighth?
Not me.
Not me.
Sure miss it to you yet?
We'll, uh, we'll come up with an alternate. You're gonna be in Alaska?
Yes.
You know, I think we have a training budget, uh, in, in the council, anyway, that.
I picked up the one in Pierre, maybe you can pick this one up?
We might be able to get tickets, cheap, all great.
Yeah, I got them. Do we need to adjourn?
Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn, any further discussion? All in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.